I'm Jason Palmer, one of the hosts of The Intelligence, The Economist's daily current affairs podcast. The Economist's award winning shows make sense of what matters. From our special series on China's president to our weekly podcasts on business, technology and American politics. Our journalists provide fair, in-depth reporting on the events shaping the world. To get the annual plan for less than $2.50 per month, search for Economist Podcasts Plus to start listening today.
Today on City Cast Chicago, Chicago becomes the largest city to call for a ceasefire in Gaza. The city and state's COVID-19 recovery money is running out fast. And Chatham's only movie theater is closing again. To break these stories down and more, we've got Chalk Beat Chicago, Samantha Smiley, and the Tribe's award-winning Tonya Hill. It's Friday, February 2nd. I'm Jacoby Cochran and this is what Chicago is talking about. Good morning Samantha, how you feeling G?
Good morning, I'm feeling okay. I'm glad it's warmer outside because I was tired of that negative degree weather. And then today is sunny, oh my gosh.
Gee, I looked out the window this morning and saw a beautiful picture of blue sky. I don't care how it feels outside, I'm getting out there today at some point for a walk. I was talking on yesterday's episode about maybe breaking the bike out. I don't know if I'm gonna do that just yet, you know?
I don't know if that's safe.
Right, I don't know if I'm gonna be doing that just yet, but I am gonna be getting outside. Tonya, morning my friend, how you feeling?
Good morning, I'm feeling good. The sun is out, it's Black History Month, I feel unstoppable, like you know?
That's what I'm talking about.
It's great, yeah.
Well, let's get this conversation started on a light note. One of my favorite shows to host in the city is back this weekend at Lincoln Hall. And it's called Karaoke Storytellers. We bring in some amazing performers across the city. And they tell a five to 10 minute story. And then they sing a karaoke song that's related to that. I don't know if y'all go to karaoke or enjoy karaoke, but when I see people sort of drunkenly belting out classics, like you up there singing John Legend's Ordinary People with all your chest, I kind of want to know what's going on in your life? Why do you sing it? And so in Karaoke Storytellers, we kind of do that. We tell you the stories behind some of these amazing songs for people. And Sam, I want to start with you. Do you have a go-to karaoke song? Or one that, you know, if people, you know, if they get you in the right place at the right time, you'll go ahead and sing it, you know, with all your chest?
I, so me and my sister just had this conversation because she's planning to do karaoke for her birthday this year. And I already told her, okay, I just want everybody to know, my song is Whitney Houston's "I'm Every Woman." And I'm gonna need for y'all to sit out or y'all could join in on the harmonies. But that's my song, that's my song.
I need the story behind that because you're warning people not to go into the catalog and pick "I Am Every Woman." Like, why is that song like your go-to?
Uh, cuz I remember singing it with my mom a lot as a kid. Now I'm listening to the lyrics now, I'm like, why was I singing that song? But, but it was, like me and my mom used to have like Sunday cleanup. And that would be the songs that she would be playing from that time. So, um, and I just remember us just singing at the top of our lungs, "I'm every woman, it's all in me." Yes, so it just brings happy, it just brings happy memories. Like, I love that song.
This is why I love the show though, because again, you go to karaoke and you wonder what's sitting behind that. And it'd be some very beautiful stories of people's connection to their family and their grandparents, a song that got them through a hard time, a song that just reminds them of brighter days. Tonya, what's that go-to karaoke jam for you?
So I always tend to pick something that I think the crowd will help me sing.
Okay.
Just because, you know, the pressure of singing in front of people, it's, it's a lot. But I'm thinking about the last time that I did karaoke at my friend's backyard barbecue. And we sang "When I See You" by Fantasia. So the entire party helped us sing that, so nobody really heard me.
Hey, y'all got two amazing tracks. But I want you all to know, I'm gonna be playing that as soon as we get off the call today. Both of them, back-to-back to back-to-back. Again, if you are interested in coming out to Karaoke Storytellers, hearing some amazing songs, learning the stories behind those, feel free to check the show notes and buy your tickets for this Sunday. And if you want to tell us your favorite karaoke song or some karaoke events you like to attend in the city, leave us a text or a voicemail at 773-780-0246. Every single Friday on City Cast, we like to bring in our friends from around the city to talk about the stories that they were following this week. And we had some big ones in the city this week. After weeks of back and forth in the city council and months of protests in the streets by Chicagoans, the city became the largest city in America to call for a permanent ceasefire to the state violence taking place in Gaza that has cost tens of thousands of lives, displaced millions, and altered Palestine forever. Tonya, you have been covering this closely and we're in City Hall this week. Can you describe that scene for us?
Sure, so just like last week, lots of people there for the meeting. Confusion because of what CPD is doing to try to like kind of secure City Hall. Normally you can walk in right on the South Street entrance, but they had people go all the way around to the Washington Street side to come in.
Nah, I've seen, I've seen tons of our colleagues this week, including you, just being like, this is not how things usually go. This, this actually seems as chaotic as trying to get to a City Hall meeting during the last administration, which was one thing we were told would not be similar between the two.
I would agree with that. I've actually been having some side conversations with some more seasoned City Hall reporters about just like what is going on? Why is it so difficult to, you know, attend as a, like a member of the public? And also like, why does it feel like some of the members of the press specifically are having a hard time just getting upstairs to do our jobs? So, you know, with that tension, CPD, uh, all these bikes in the middle of a lobby, just like very, you know, like they're anticipating something, you know, bad is going to happen. And they're also carrying that vibe a little bit inside the gallery. So I think for the most part, the mayor was able to get control of the crowd. But then transitioning to the moment, um, hearing like the passion debates from people that surprised me, you know, Alderman, William Hall, I wasn't expecting to hear from him, just talking about, you know, I have people in my ward that are from Palestine and he's also a pastor. So putting that in context of what Christianity teaches us about how to love one another and how we should be taking care of each other as people and how this is wrong. So the mayor had to tie, to break the tie, of course, after all of this. So just seeing the emotion in the room from people that were there supporting the efforts, seeing Alderman Rosanna Rodriguez Sanchez being emotional. And also, you know, once we dispersed from City Council and her embracing, um, a City Hall staffer that is Arab. And like seeing that exchange and just her saying to reporters, you know, we told Palestinian people, we listened to them. And now they can go home and reflect that message to, to one another that we listened to them and that we heard them.
Yeah, I mean, again, we had expected a vote this week after it was pushed back last week. But one thing that has sustained over the last few months is the number of young people, the number of youth organizers who have been getting out and letting their voice be heard. We saw a coordinated effort amongst high school students this week to walk out of class, some of them making their way to City Hall to let their voice be heard in a way that says, hey, we understand this is symbolic in nature, but it's been months of gratuitous violence that's getting splashed across our screens. We're seeing bombings, we're seeing children without parents. We're, we're seeing, uh, you know, folks having to rebuild amongst the rubble. What, what are you hearing from young people who are, you know, just organizing for something?
Yeah, just that, that very thing. I think it's very different for us, you know, speaking as millennial. When the Iraq war was happening, you know, yes, we had cell phones, but we didn't have social media in the same way. So they are watching and listening to firsthand accounts from people that are their age telling them about the destruction and the devastation that is going on in Palestine and in Gaza specifically. So I think it's different for, for them. They're seeing it with their own eyes and they're seeing adults, you know, ignore them. And we know many of the victims that have been murdered in Palestine are women and children.
A lot of things have changed now. And I do feel like for Gen Z, this time period is their kind of like anti-war protest of the seventies against Vietnam. Because in that time, we saw, those students at colleges and at high schools saw a lot of images from Vietnam that was startling to them and that moved them to get out on the street. Same thing with Generation Z and the videos that they're seeing on TikTok and the destruction that they're seeing there.
Yeah, I mean, we saw the, the alders be split, right? Mayor Brandon Johnson had to sort of cast the tie-breaking vote. And this resolution called for a permanent ceasefire, humanitarian assistance, and the immediate and unconditional release of all hostages. Tonya, we know this is symbolic in nature, that it's not going to, you know, necessarily impact the decisions of the federal government. But you saw some of the opposition saying, you know, we shouldn't be, uh, you know, criticizing Joe Biden and his authority, which for me, I don't think we're arguing in good faith. Because that's not what we heard when the city council was taking up a resolution to support Ukraine unanimously. That's not what we heard in October when, when Alderwoman Silverstein came out and said, we should pass a resolution in support of Israelis after the violence on October 7th. You know, what, what do you think is the significance? How important is it that Chicago has taken this stance, even if it was, was split amongst our council members?
Sure, so I think one of the big things, and I'm sure you probably said this on the show, like Cook County alone has the most Palestinian people of any other county in the US. So I can imagine, you know, being Palestinian and like having representation, you know, if I did live in the city of Chicago and people not advocating for me. So even to your point about like, yes, this is symbolic in nature, but people really look to Chicago to move the needle on issues. And we're a progressive city, you know, this is the blue wall. So I think it kind of, to me, what Alderwoman Rosanna Rodriguez was saying after the council vote was like, it kind of puts, um, Joe Biden, President Joe Biden and the administration on notice. You are coming here for the national, you know, convention. And the people of Chicago have spoken.
Yeah.
So will you, will you listen to them? Will you hear what they're saying?
The one thing I will caution listeners, because I've already seen people, you know, use excuses like, you know, why is Chicago taking up this when we have our own issues? I think that that's a fallacy to say Chicago and Chicago wins are not standing up and asking for, you know, their own versions of ceasefires in their own community, you know, working to organize against sort of longstanding segregation and disinvestment. I've also seen people equate this vote with sort of support for violence against, you know, Jewish neighbors and Jewish Chicagoans, which again, I do not and will not see those things as synonymous. You know, when I listen to protests, when I listen to the majority of people who are calling for a ceasefire, I do not see people condemning a religion or condemning an identity, they're condemning state violence. And so I think that is what people are calling out. So we'll continue to follow this, as Tonya mentioned earlier, the DNC is coming to Chicago this summer. This, this measure is symbolic, but will largely be a conversation point over the next few weeks. So we will continue to, to update our listeners and our readers.
Shipping can make or break a sale, so optimize how you ship your orders with ShipStation. They make it easy to automate and manage orders no matter how big your business grows. And they might even be able to help reduce shipping and warehouse costs. So optimize and keep up your momentum for growth with ShipStation. Sign up for your free 60-day trial now at shipstation.com and use the code POD. That's shipstation.com with the code POD.
There's a big difference between talking and reporting, especially right now with a fire hose worth of news coming your way. You know what helps? Having reporters in the field. I'm Brad Milkie from ABC News. And that's what we've got on ABC's daily podcast, Start Here. Every morning, Start Here takes you across the country and around the world for a quick, smart look at the stories that matter. It's fast, it's straightforward, and sometimes, gasp, news can even be fun. So let's meet up tomorrow morning, listen to Start Here wherever you get your podcasts.
Sam, I want to turn to you. The Illinois State Board of Education unanimously approved a budget proposal of $11 billion earlier this week, which is a $650 million increase that they're asking for. These are some, these are some big ass numbers with a ton of details. But set alongside the fact that COVID-19 relief money is quickly running out, it's important we better understand these numbers. So can you break down the significance of this budget and what the Illinois State Board of Education is asking for?
Around this time every year, the Illinois State Board of Education and this state superintendent makes a proposal. They, they pitch how much money they need for the education budget. This time they're like, we need a 6.3% increase, which is like, yeah, like you said, it's $653 million. Um, and everybody kind of, like when I heard the number, I was like, so where does it gonna come from? Cuz I heard the revenues are down. Oh, but you know, of course, they, they have to make a proposal. They have to say what they need it for. And they have to say like, why they need it. And so it kind, it makes sense. But I think the thing that people are really focusing on when they look at that budget proposal is the evidence-based funding formula, which is for, uh, public K to 12 schools. Some of those have pre-K too, but, um, for public schools. And people are like, y'all only gonna put $350 million again into that EBF formula? That, that evidence-based funding formula? We need a lot more state funding right now. And people have been, for the last couple of years, have been asking for at least $550 million in that formula.
Yeah, this was a huge part of Mayor Brandon Johnson's campaign as well for mayors. You know, I'm going to get the state to cough up more money.
Yeah, we gonna see, um, and cuz the people saying they ain't got it. Um, and so it, it's, it's like, in order for schools to be adequately funded by 2027, which is in the state statute, it just constantly putting in $350 million a year is not gonna, is not gonna get the state there anytime soon.
So if the state ain't got the money, ain't no more COVID-19 relief money coming or any federal grants coming down that we know of right now. What's, what's on the other side of that? If we don't get enough money, what are the consequences to that, Samantha?
The folks at Georgetown University's Edinomics Lab have been saying things like, it is gonna be like a bloodletting, almost like we're, we're probably gonna see a lot of school employees and educators being fired. We're gonna see a lot of cuts in programs once that federal funds dry up. And I should say too, the federal funds are expected to dry up September, at the end of September this year.
2024.
Yeah, this year, you know, we've been saying 2024 for, since 2022, and now we here, we here.
It's a lot of next year, next school year. Cuz even when I was reading it and I saw next school year, my mind immediately was like, 2025, and I was like,
Oh yeah, no.
No, the next school year start at the end of the summer. That's, that's, that's soon.
That's real soon, so, um, and that, and that was billions of dollars of money. And schools, you saw schools like have after-school programs. They expanded their summer school programs. They had hired on more staff. And so now it's like, either, like, I think it's gonna be programs cut, people being fired, and some really, some real belt tightening for the state's 850-plus school districts. And it's all gonna look different for different schools based on their needs. But as everybody's saying like right now, like without that additional state funding, like they're also being hit by inflation too. Like inflation hits schools as well. So the bills have already been high. And now it's like, we're not giving you new funding. It's just, I, I think it's gonna be scary for a lot of people who work in schools. And, you know, we're gonna be seeing a lot of like Board of Education folks across the state being like, oh God, oh God, next year's gonna be rough.
Mm-hmm. Well, let's drill down to a huge example in the state's largest district, which of course is Chicago Public Schools. Through the use of some of that recovery money, we were able to expand our offering of pre-K. But with the money drying up, if the state, like they say, we ain't got the money, if that doesn't end up getting to Chicago Public Schools, what does that look like for the expansion of preschool? Sam, what, what's next for those programs?
Yeah, so I want to say first, my friend and my colleague, Rima Amin, wrote this story for Chalk Beat Chicago. I gotta give her her props cuz she went out, got that data, looked at that spending data, and was like, girl, I don't know. She was like, wait a minute, they spent how much money to expand pre-K for three and four-year-olds in the city? And even though it wasn't like a large amount, it was like, in her story, she said it was $700 million that the, that the city has used to expand pre-K. And it was just $137 million of COVID relief dollars. But they, they spent a lot of those COVID funds though for employees. And so it, the question is how they're gonna make that up? Especially when CPS is already predicting a large budget deficit. Uh, and so I would say yet again, the bottom line here is that Chicago Public Schools have been using the federal funds for preschool. People really need access to preschool for their three and four-year-olds and they need free and affordable care. It's very expensive to do preschool. Um, and that means without some of that funding, and if the, if the city or the district can't make that funding up, that can mean seats are being cut for families.
We have over 16,000 full-day seats for four-year-olds and another 7,300 half-day seats for three and four-year-olds. When you hear from parents in these stories, I mean, just how crucial has free childcare been as they're recovering? As they're either going back into the office, finding new jobs, just sort of providing stable, like a stable system for their family? How crucial is both the access to and then potentially the lack of pre-K for these families?
Without those seats, and, and I would say with the half-day programs, a lot of people just want full-day programs because half-day means you gotta pick up your kid in the middle of the day. Having a full-day program was really helpful so parents can go to work and not have to worry about them leaving their jobs for, for a couple of hours or for somebody in the family to come pick up their kid. The cost of living is high. And groceries are high, okay? Formula is high, everything is high. Like, so it, it really means a lot for families to have somewhere safe for their child to go to and people that they trust with their child while they're at work.
Tonya, back to you. Earlier this week, on Tuesday, I saw a picture on Facebook of a sign outside the Chatham Movie Theater off 87th and the Dan Ryan that said the theater was permanently closed. I'm gonna be real with you, my first thought was, oh, this must be an old picture. Because this same theater, when it was called Studio Movie Grill, closed during the pandemic and shut down in April of 2021. I'm pretty sure it was with the same note on the door technique. And then in August 2021, we all celebrated because they had their new name. It reopened with a ton of community support. People were excited to be there. I don't know about y'all, if y'all have been to the 87th in the last few years, but like, they put a bar in there, they've been renovated, new menu, like things that had definitely looked different. But unfortunately, uh, this wasn't an old picture, just a feeling, a deja vu. Tonya, what is the latest coming off of 87th Street?
So I found this news out yesterday after City Council. And I was just like, what? It's closed again, like you said, the same thing over. And then also to let people know, like just by putting the sign on the door. I'm sorry, it's kind of petty.
Bro, taping it on the door, that's how they, they've closed grocery stores in our neighborhoods. That's how they close movie theaters. They, they just have decided, no, you're not getting any type of week or month advance notice, you gonna show up and it's just gonna be a sign on your door.
Right, and I'm just like, what if you bought tickets that, like, to see a movie or something, you know? So just thinking about it, like you said, the renovations they done, definitely agree the bar was a hit. I was like, okay, it's a bar in here. And that's a very spacious movie theater. But my earliest memories of that are like elementary school me. So, you know, I was a Girl Scout. We used to go to that movie theater, you know, as field trips. I remember when Chance rented out the theater to see Get Out and like brought all those tickets for, for folks to see it. So thinking about, you know, as a Southsider, like that was a very convenient location. Right off the expressway, like east-west, right in the middle, you know? You can go east to where you need to go, west to where you need to go. And that we just do not have movie theaters other than driving all the way to west to see, to go to Forest City or the Harper Theater, which is a lot smaller.
Which is a lot smaller, and if you go in there, no disrespect to Harper Theater, it's right up the street from me. But let's be real, when them like big movies debut, they just don't have the space or the staff to, to, to move in 50 people. And then again, shout out to the renovations, the improvements. The staff has always been helpful when I go in. But watching our options, you said this to me earlier, watching our third-place options just disappear in our neighborhood time after time. We just had Otavia on the show earlier this week. And I feel bad for my G cuz she'll never get to come on and really talk about, you know, we, we talk a lot about good news, but so many of her stories, when she comes on, have had to deal with grocery stores shuttering, movie theaters shuttering, restaurants shorting. And these are supposed to be basic amenities for a neighborhood. These are supposed to be things you can expect to have within driving or walking distance of your neighborhood, except if you live on the south and the west side, because you shouldn't have expectations for consistent amenities. You should actually, it seems, be prepared to have your heart broken very suddenly and with no, um, with, with, with no sort of preparation. And that, again, some people might read this and just go, oh, you know, it's not viable for them to keep it up. We keep hearing that, but we, we keep hearing that. That's why the Walmart is gone.
It's the same excuse.
Right, that's why the restaurants go. It's not viable economically. And that, that, that excuse constantly when we're seeing sort of investment pooled from our neighborhoods, especially as we say, hold on, but we are showing up. I was at 87th, right? I was grocery shopping there. I was, you know, pulling up and spending my money in the community. So to tell me it's not viable, for whom? All right, before we get out of here, we want to end this episode like we end every episode in City Cast Chicago. And that's with some good news. Sam, I'm gonna start with you. What's your good news for the City Cast fam today?
So my first, my first piece of good news is that if you go to CVS, keep your receipt, make sure you use those coupons to get Valentine's Day chocolate for a discounted price. I did that yesterday. I bought some Valentine's Day chocolate for myself. I am not sharing it with anybody. I hope my boyfriend does not listen to this because, let me tell you.
Hey, don't say that, hey, don't say that.
He ain't getting none, he ain't getting none of my chocolate.
Just let him know, let him listen and just let him know.
I'll be like, you ain't getting none of my chocolate. But I bought me some chocolate and I went to the counter and it was like $20. I took out those coupons and was like, woo, I'm ready.
Long line of receipts there. Long line of receipts.
Bro, keeping a CVS receipt take a different time, right? It take a different type of patience, dog. They giving you a whole personal user manual.
I know, but it went from $20 to seven, let me tell you. That's, I'm, I'm telling you, gotta get your coupons ready, y'all.
Tonya, over to you. What is your some good news? I'm working on it, I'm working on it.
No, it sounds good, that was, that was real nice. Um, you know, it is Aquarius season. So I seem to always end up on City Cast around my birthday, so.
So we love you G, we trying to celebrate you.
So follow it, I love y'all too, following this trend. My birthday is next week exactly, so I'm excited to be turning a new age. And I'm just very grateful for life and just all of the experiences I had this previous year. So, and I will be in Florida, so.
You know, I was gonna ask that, Sam, I'm like, where you gonna be? Because we, we talked about this February sun shining, but apparently that sun ain't shiny enough for you.
No, so funny enough, I am going on a conference or to a conference and it just so happens to be in Florida and it just so happened to fall on my birthday.
A couple of coincidences.
Just so many, and so we love to see it. So I'm looking forward to that.
Well, happy early birthday to you, Tonya. We appreciate all of the work that you do at the Tribe and beyond. We appreciate you always making time for us. We go back, back, we went to college together. So it's just cool to see where you, you and your career have been growing, my friend. So happy early birthday to you.
Thank you, Jacoby, same here for you.
We said Karaoke Storytellers earlier today. Hopefully let's start guys to February because that entire episode was good news packed with Black History Month events, Valentine's Day events. But I want to end my good news in a similar spirit to Tonya. And I want to send an extremely happy birthday to the executive producer of City Cast Chicago, Simone Ali Saya. I have known Simone now going on three years because today is also the three-year anniversary of me joining City Cast Chicago. And Simone was the first City Cast Chicago team member I met because she was the first person hired. But throughout these three years, Simone is one of the smartest, like one of the funniest, one of like, she's deeply passionate about the work that we do. But she is always, it feels so like level-headed, like, like makes this job. like, like makes this job so fun and so easy to do every day. I just want to give her a big happy birthday to producer Simone Alisea. You know, the last year for you was extremely huge and I hope this year is, is just as good for you.
Happy birthday to ya. Happy birthday to ya.
Happy birthday, happy birthday to you.
Kicking off Black History Month right with a black birthday song, okay?
Before we get out of here, I want to give a huge thank you to our guest today. Another shout out to Chalkbeat Chicago, Samantha Smiley. Thank you for joining us, G.
Thank you.
And a huge thank you and another happy early birthday to the tribes. Tonya Hill, we appreciate you making time for us.
Thank you.
Before we let you go, Simone, I'm not the only person who want to send you well wishes. Here's some other people who want to wish you a happy, happy birthday.
Hey Simone, it's Carrie, former City Caster, also known as C-Money.
Hey Simone, it's Will.
Hey, hey, it's Jermaine from the marketing team. Hey Simone, this is Lee wishing you a happy birthday and many more years of Chicago adventures.
As you know, you are City Cast's in-house trivia master, so I have a question for you. Which current Chicago resident shares their birthday with Groundhog's Day and is also an awesome all-around person and colleague? The answer? Well, obviously it's you and probably some other people too. I mean, Chicago is a really big city.
Bing bong. Hey, this is Chant, the shapeshifter slash badger from the documentary podcast, Hello from the Magic Tavern. Simone, happy birthday from all of us here in Fune. Arnie, Yusidor and I, we all got together. We know you live in Chicago, which is where Arnie is from, and we got you for your birthday. Get this, check this out. I don't know if this makes sense, your own private portal to Fune. All you have to do, according to Yusidor, is crawl through your fridge and you'll end up here. I don't know what that means. Test it out. We'll see you soon.
Thanks so much for making City Cast fun and informative. Never knew how much I needed to know about pumpkins and the state of Illinois.
And I am so happy to wish you the happiest of all birthdays, Simone.
And that I'm so proud of you. You're doing such a great job leading the City Cast Chicago team and making a fantastic podcast every day, five days a week and newsletter. It's a lot of work, but you're doing it with grace and style. Happy birthday. Sending you love.
Hey Simone, it's mom. Just wishing you the happiest of birthdays. Sorry I couldn't join you this year, but I'll see you soon. In the meantime, have a great day, wishing you all the love and happiness this world can hold. Love you, baby.
And for the rest of you, make sure you stay tapped in to all of the things City Cast Chicago has to offer. By bookmarking our website, chicago.citycast.fm, saving our phone number in your phone, 773-780-0246, and subscribe to our daily newsletter, Hey Chicago. I want to give another round of thank yous to our executive producer, Simone Alisea, our producer, Michelle Navarro, our newsletter editor, Sydney Madden. The music we all love is from Sam Thousand, All the Kimonos, and Mark Greenberg from the Mayfair Workshop. Hey, if you new to City Cast Chicago, where you been? We've been here three years rocking for over 725 episodes. So you know, maybe go back and catch up. And if you've been here, we appreciate you making us a part of your day, your week, or whenever you got some time for us. We gonna be back bright and early on Monday. Hopefully you'll join us. And by hopefully, I mean, make sure you join us. Like this is my job here. If you don't come, I don't eat. So like, come on, come on. Peace.
Simone, tis I, Yusidor the Blue from the Hello from the Magic Tavern podcast. And while I have many secret names that I shall ne'er utter loud, today I shall speak these words aloud unto thee. Happy birthday from everyone at Hello from the Magic Tavern.